Everybody who had that night, the foundation has also met since then to name, to decide the teachers and organizations that are beneficiaries of our spring grants. And it's one of the great pleasures of being on the board of the foundation to read all those applications that our teachers and our schools and our parents submit because their creativity and the ways they want to enrich the experience for all of our kids is really an inspiration for all of us. It's a pleasure to have the opportunity to read those applications. And I wish we always had enough money to fund all of them completely. So, we need to keep supporting the foundation so we can keep helping all of our staff members do these great things for our students. Because I want to specifically ask, thank Kathy Battalamenti for all of her hard work. It really has been a tremendous benefit to our school district. Just to give you a tiny snapshot at some of the variety of things that the foundation is going to be supporting. It goes from everything from forensics programs and robotics programs, also school-wide programs and wellness, assembly for music enrichment, for Chinese and French programs, butterflies, just amazing.
Mathematics.
Mathematics. Really fixing some of our orf musical instruments so they're better. It's a wonderful variety of things that we're able to help to support. And thank you to all of our school found, uh, community to help to make those things be, come into reality for our kids. Some of the other things that are coming up are on May 5th, because of the lovely weather that has not been happening, the spring fling at the farm was postponed for a better day. And so now it's going to be on May 5th. It's a pancake breakfast. You do need to buy tickets online in advance because they have time slots that go anywhere from nine o'clock in the morning to three o'clock in the afternoon. But it's a pancake breakfast, so they want to be sure that they can serve everybody and not have to make them wait too long. So please go onto our website and buy your tickets. It'll be fun. The barns will be open. There's lots of wonderful new animals at the farm, and it'll be a great time. But also, a special part of this time of the year, it's already time for kindergarten roundup for next year. Yeah, so first one of our elementary schools has it on April 30th, and then it's within the next couple of weeks thereafter. So please go to our website for the dates and times for each of our elementary schools. It's a little bit different, but it's an exciting time to get ready for the year ahead already. And also, summer camp registration through our recreation department is also available. This coming Monday is the next DARE meeting at 6:30 right here in this room. Also on Monday, right here in this room, Representative Mike McCready will be meeting with, with families, with citizens at 12:30. And also on Monday, same time, at one o'clock up over at our high school, will be the child assembly where we have the opportunity to hear about this year's winners in art and music. But there is also the art exhibit that is available at High School Media Center. It opens this Friday, and will be on from Friday until next Wednesday. And it's always fascinating to see what are the work that our students are doing. So I encourage you, if you have the chance, to stop by to the high school to come and see the art exhibit. It's wonderful. And I hope all my colleagues will be able to come to the assembly at one o'clock on Monday. Actually, day after tomorrow, at the nature center, our Johnson, the L. Johnson Nature Center is planting 42 trees, and they're looking for some volunteers. They are getting trees from Relief Michigan, Michigan DNR with support of the township, and they're looking volunteers to help plant. So, starting at 8:45 in the morning, Dan Badgley is asking you to email him at dbadgley@bloomfield.org or call him. So he's trying to get some RSVPs to have an idea how many volunteers he's going to have.
What was the date on that again?
It's day after tomorrow, this Saturday morning.
Saturday.
Yep. Another exciting one's a little bit farther out in the future. Last year, our superintendent had the great opportunity to play with a Bloomfield jazz band down at Cliff Bells. I don't think he's going to make it this time because I think we have a conflict. I think it's actually a DARE night. It's a DARE night. But I did go down with my husband to Cliff Bells last year, and it was so much fun. It is on Monday, May 14th at 7:00 PM. And it's like $10 for a ticket of great jazz and fun at Cliff Bells. I really encourage you to go online and be part of that. It's, it's a great fun time. And it's great to hear the talent of a lot of our students. It's just amazing. And I think that's all I've got. So, we have a lot of things. Please mark a calendar for all the good things coming down the pike. And there's lots more coming not too far in the future. Oh, one other big one coming up next week is the Bloomfield Youth Guidance, which is next Tuesday at the high school. We're honoring 23 students. So, that's really a really special opportunity to honor students who do extraordinary things in our district. And it's not just about their grades. It's about some of the humanitarian and other extraordinary gifts that our kids share. So then I invite my superintendent to give his report.
I got nothing. You covered it all. That was great. That was really good. You got a lot. There were so many things that I missed and wouldn't have even had thought to bring up. So that was great because there's just a lot going on.
There's a lot going on.
And it's all great stuff. I wanted to just mention a couple of things. The equity and inclusion work that we've been embarked on for over four years now is really continuing in earnest. We've had a lot of training this very week. We had an institute for healing racism. We've had a master champions class. And Dr. Elsaid, I don't know if you, as a participant, would you like to just speak to that for a moment?
Sure. You know, this is something that we've been working on for several years now. And we worked through several different levels to get to the master champions, where we had this whole room filled with people. And we were talking, this was actually our fourth day. It's, every month, we've been having one whole day that we've all come together and had training and be working together to really coordinate as a district to, to really operationalize now this across the district and provide the processes. And so it was so exciting. And everyone has such great ideas. And already, things are happening. The, the experiences that people were, and the initiatives that they've been taking in their classrooms are just fantastic. And so we had a graduation ceremony, and so this was our first cohort. And so, this is just such a wonderful time that, that this very important work that we've been working on as a community is really coming to fruition. And, and really is at a tipping point where we can bring everyone forward. So that's really great.
Well, thanks for sharing, shedding a little more light, and also for participating and being one of those master champions, as is Mr. Cohen. So we're really thankful. A couple of other things. I'm just really proud of our forensics teams. They just continue knocking it out of the park. BHMS is going to states on Saturday.
Yeah.
And the Bionic Black Hawks, same with them. Our robotics team won the safety award, and for the third year in a row, won the prestigious chairman's award as they're on their way to the world championships, ranked 18th out of over 400 teams this year. And they're going to compete at Kobo Hall and Ford Field. And if any, anyone has an opportunity to go down there, that is going to be an event to be remembered. And if you have an opportunity to go, to go down and see that event, it's April 25th, 26th, 27th. It's in that neighborhood, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Just phenomenal.
And if you're going, you have to get a badge in advance. So talk to me. I just did it.
And, you know, I just want to thank our, our teams across the district. You know, in life, things don't always go perfectly smoothly. We've had some weird weather. We've had some power outages. We've had some, some people with, you know, unexpected family situations where, you know, we've had to, they haven't been able to be in a classroom or in a school. And everybody's just pulling together. You know, whether it's our, our physical plant services team, or whether it's our administrators or our teachers, everybody's covering for one another. Everybody's making sure that the job gets done. And we've had a week like that. And I just marvel, and I'm so grateful for the people that who've just stepped up to make things run smoothly even when circumstances arise. And lastly, two, two things I want to mention. Safety and security work continues. If you look on our webpage, on our website, you'll see a lot of, a lot of information around safety and security. We had a panel discussion, including our chief of police from Bloomfield Township, who came in and was part of that panel, including one of our students who was on that panel. And that is available on our website. That was televised. And so we had a really good, robust discussion about where the state of safety and security is in the district with, you know, post Parkland particularly. And we are continuing to gather information. There will be a survey going out. Our regular community survey will contain some questions around us trying to get further understanding and information from parents about some of their preferences for next moves that we might take in terms of improving our security. Even though it's at a very high level, you can always get better. So, look for that survey and make sure that you avail yourselves of those items. We're going to take the top prioritized items and start putting them into place right away. We thank our community for all of its, all of their input. And lastly, and I've saving the most exciting news for last, our very own school board president, Cynthia Vanoyen, was named the Michigan Association of School Boards 2017 President Award of Recognition was bestowed upon her. It is their highest honor. And there were only 10 awards out of over 4,000 school board members in the state of Michigan. Only 10 received that award this year. In addition, she has had some other awards of just, she just collects these things apparently. She's also received the Master Platinum Award from MASB. She's the Lifetime Volunteer Leadership Award recipient for, in 2015, from the Greater West Bloomfield Michigan Week Celebration Group. She does a stellar job, and it's about, it's, I should say it's about time. But it's a wonderful thing when others see what we see, Cynthia. Thank you for all the service you've given at such a high level to our school district and our community over the years. We really appreciate you.
And thank you to all of you who've sent me notes. It's been an amazing experience. I've had the true experience of the internet over this. I've gotten responses from neighbors from 30 years ago, and nieces and nephews around the country who I never would have mentioned it to. So it's been really amazing. It's been really fun. Thank you very much. Appreciate all the sweet, lovely notes I have gotten from employees and my colleagues. Appreciate it very much. Okay. On that note, I think I'll ask the secretary for the consent motion, please.
I agree. I move that the Board of Education approve recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Request to approve minutes, study session on March 15, 2018. Request to approve minutes, regular meeting of March 15, 2018. Military development for fiscal year 2018-19. Request to approve monthly financial reports. Request to approve dispersment reports. Request to approve refuge collection one-year extension. Request to approve passenger van purchases in the amount of $64,626. Request to approve HR actions.
Do I have support?
Support.
Support from Mr. Promoteer on discussion.
Mr. Barron.
Yeah. Looking at the list of names of people who are retiring, one of them is very close to me, a woman that I've known for about 35 years now, Ms. Greenlee, Tina Greenlee, who I knew as Tina Collegius back in the day. Tina is our theater director at the high school. And we have such a very strong both visual and performing arts programs all the way through our elementary, middle, and high school. But Tina really is part of a very strong team at the high school. She puts on a musical in the fall and a stage show in the spring, which will come up in a few weeks. Matter of fact, I'm like, what show is it? Does anyone know? I'm not even sure. But it's open, I think, in a couple of weeks. So anyway, so Tina is going to be retired.
We'll have the answer by the next week.
So Tina is retiring, and we just want to wish her well in her retirement and joy.
Very good. Anybody else? I just also want to call up a couple of other people. Tommy Gersh is also retiring, and she's done such amazing work at Wing Lake with our students. She will be sorely missed. She's done, she's like an angel to those children. So, thank her so much. And also Lynn George, who's been at Model High School for quite a long time. And she is like a mom for those kids. She really does amazing things. So not that everybody else here isn't wonderful, but Lynn's been with us for 33 years. Tommy's been with us for 21 years. And Tina's been with us for 40 years. That's an amazing legacy that they have given to us, and an amazing number of children's lives who they have touched and changed and for the better. So thank you to all of them so much. And everybody else who's on this list who just doesn't happen to have that many years. Anyway, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. So then our next item is a special report on our literacy celebration. And I think Todd's going to introduce our elementary principals.
Good evening. This year, we have been on a pretty significant exploration to study our literacy programming in an effort to really precision our practice and to really increase the cohesiveness of that particular discipline. And so tonight is part of that process. We have our elementary schools represented here to talk about some of the celebrations. At an upcoming BIC, we'll be discussing some of the efforts led by the literacy learning team to dig more into some of the, some of the insights that we have fallen into regarding the study that we've been doing this year. But tonight is really to kind of bring forward to some of the rich work that's been happening within our elementary schools. And before I introduce those that are here to present, I wanted to just take a moment and recognize somebody who couldn't be with us here tonight. And, you know, as you know, Carrie Croker's husband recently passed away, and today was her husband's Craig funeral. And I just wanted to make sure that I mentioned Carrie this evening because she has been a pivotal role in all of our efforts regarding literacy at our elementary level. And she is an important part of this group. And I know she would, you know, she would have wanted to be here to present. And if anything, we probably had to tell her to, to stay away. And, but I certainly wanted to, to mention her this evening. Her staff has been outstanding in her absence and has helped put some of this work together so that Eastover is represented as well. And I couldn't be more proud of the staff and community over at Eastover, how they have pulled together. Even today, we had Mary Blair and Harling Singh over there leading the, leading the school through a difficult day, helping coordinate all of our guest teachers, all of our parent volunteers that really just chipped in to help make sure that today ran smoothly. And I couldn't be more proud of them, of, of the hard work that Carrie's been doing, her, her contributions to this work, even though she's not here to be part of the team. And I'm sure I'm speaking on behalf of everyone behind me that, you know, we really appreciate her efforts, even though she can't be here to, to be part of the presentation.
And the board sends Carrie her thoughts.
So, but I will get into introducing those are here. We have Kimberly Hampton, Jenna Kennedy, Nick Russo, Dr. Mary Hillberry, and Adam Shear here to present some of our elementary literacy celebrations. And I think if, if they're ready, they'll come on up and, and begin.
Good evening.
Technology gods are working.
Yes, let's get in the right spot. So Cynthia, I agree with you. It's, it's timely that now that we're finished celebrating our fourth winter, we can move forward with the celebrations of spring, just in time, for literacy special celebrations this evening. So, as we work through what's been happening at our four elementary buildings, we're going to tuck that under an umbrella of the essential practices as we move through our sharing with you here this evening. And those essential practices are really a standard of care, minimum standard of care for every child, every day, in every classroom. And it's a statewide partnership really intended to lift collective capacity across the state. And our principals, our teachers, our elementary learning community has really leaned in to self-study of their practice as well as embracing professional learning as, as we've moved to think about these essentials and alongside our current practice. This is one of our resource, resources that we're, we're working with. So, we're going to start off with essential one.
Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
Cynthia, congratulations.
Thank you, Adam.
So cool. So, last summer, we attended some training around essential practices, around literacy. And essential number one was deliberate research-informed efforts to foster literacy, motivation, and engagement within and across our lessons. And that's for everybody. And so, what does that look like in a classroom? Well, it's providing daily opportunities for children to make choices in their reading and writing. I guess with the word choices, it's, we should add within limits to that. So what, what we read, within limits. What to listen to. And when we say listen to, part of reading is listening. And a lot of people don't think of it that way, but that's exactly what it looks like. What to write, so there's choice involved with that. How to respond, and we do that in many different ways in our elementary classrooms. The order in which to complete tasks, again, when that makes sense to do that. And around homework or home learning options as well. The teacher creates opportunities for children to see themselves as successful readers and writers. The tasks for which success is well-defined include things like learning targets. We should see those up in our classrooms. What's the point of our learning today? We have things like anchor charts, which essentially cement the processes that we want them engaged in. Rubrics might be one of those things that we're looking for in a classroom. Checklists could be another thing. Teacher provides regular opportunities for children to collaborate with peers in reading and writing, such as through small group discussions of texts of interests and opportunities to write. So here you will see Think Pair Share Time, which goes on in all of our schools. There might be choral readings, like you see in that middle picture. There might be group writing where we're adding on to one another's thinking, and we can look at that writing when it's all done and get kind of this big gestalt of what's happening in our classrooms. And finally, generating reading interest. That's me with the book, could you say Adam, but it says David Gets in Trouble. I make weekly suggestions over the PA. It seems like kids really love it when the principal comes on and makes suggestions of what to read. They race down to the media center and try and pick those books up. So that's been a lot of fun. And that's been a nice change at the building. And now I think Jenna, I think you're up.
Hello. I've never been in front of the board. My name's Jenna Kennedy. I am a part-time reading recovery teacher and part-time math interventionist at Conan. So, thank you. So it's great to be here in front of you guys today. I'm going to talk about some of the things that we're doing at Conan. The second essential practice revolves around literacy and comprehension specifically. So, teachers being able to build knowledge and strategic activity in reading throughout the years. So, the first thing that they do to build that comprehension, that knowledge and strategic activity, is through facilitating discussions to support the student's interpretation of the text. So, one of the ways that we do that in every single classroom, every day, is whole group read alouds, kindergarten through fourth grade. So the students are able to have an exposure to a variety of text. If it's nonfiction, fiction, realistic fiction, historical fiction, but it's always above their reading level. So they're being pushed to utilize these comprehension strategies at a higher text level than something that they could be independently reading themselves. So the teachers are able to ask these open-ended questions and expand the student's vocabulary that's in context directly. And since they're, as you can see from the picture, sitting next to their peers, they're able to have these peer-to-peer discussions, which give them the opportunity to argue with the text, to agree with the text, to infer, to confer with each other. And it allows for really deep opportunities for connections and for them to hear their fellow peers' connections to the text as well. Another way that they build comprehension is through explicit comprehension strategies in small groups. And so, all teachers, kindergarten through fourth grade, have these targeted small group instruction where they're able to directly focus on the children's abilities and interest levels. And they can scaffold the instruction to really meet the needs of where they're at in, in order to lift them to where they need to go next. So they're helping them find the main ideas, make connections again, draw inferences. And they're really able to support the student's interpretation of the text during the small group instruction. And the last thing is that the wonderful thing of being out of the classroom is I get to see this strategic activity being built from kindergarten all the way up to fourth grade. And they're working on comprehension strategies at every single grade, but it's really building upon each other throughout the year. So up on the screen, you've got kindergarten on the left, all the way through fourth grade on the right. And as you can see, kind of how they move through the grades, how their comprehension gets a lot more in-depth. And by the end, they're really taking a historical fiction, a realistic fiction, and comparing and contrasting the differences. So that is what we are doing at Conan. Thank you.
All right. So next, we're talking about writing, research and standard-aligned writing, which really, with very young students, is about building that identity, building that sense of self as a writer and building stamina, their success along the way as they take piece by piece, the instruction, the explicit instruction, as well as the process that they're living into, how they revise their thinking, draft their thinking, and also doing that work with choice as paramount to what they're writing about. And essential six talks to us about that. We're studying models of other writers, whether that might be through a picture book, through a nonfiction text. We're also thinking about writing across the disciplines in ways that might impact science, for example. Our students were doing some science journaling. They were doing some research and labeling, much like a scientist might talk about the very specific discipline vocabulary that comes from sharing their research. This was a part of the exposition, exhibition, pardon me, around both deforestation, as well as some lower-grade work there that I cannot give you context for. But we know that our writers are thinking about the writing across each discipline as compared to writing only for the sake of writing. We know we're growing those skills as well, but I would, I would highlight that that's really transdisciplinary. You might see students in a carpet in a classroom, this left picture is in kindergarten, where a phrase is created either by the teacher or by the students themselves. And we use those kind of interactive writing experiences to really grow fluency. You might hear some choral reading there. It's also a really great place to embed in an authentic way with a morning message, some high-frequency words that students are getting repeated exposure to. This is a great illustration on the left there. You see a progression of writing. It goes from level one to eight, and the picture doesn't show you all. But this work is really a beautiful intersection between instruction and assessment. And our kindergarten staff at Eastover has really taken on that idea of teacher as action researcher. They're thinking about their writing instruction, and they're really challenging students to take what they've written and hold it up to a model and do some self-assessment work. What have I written and how does that compare to what my target is, as Adam was referencing in terms of learning targets. On the side, you see a second-grade teacher who's thought about powerful conclusions and what those conclusions should include when you're in second grade. And you can see up on the top, I love bulldogs, all the way down to a more sophisticated conclusion that has much more detail there. And so, as a part of that learning, the teacher then, on the left, you see is having a conference with that group. They had done some peer revision with one another on this day in the classroom and talked to one another about their conclusions, gave one another ideas about what they might hope to hear differently, or ideas they would have, or yeah, that's great. And teacher interacts with that, both in the conferring time, as well as in that time you see on the carpet as a targeted share. And that's really intended to lift the level of metacognition. Students are naming what they're doing as writers, so that that transfer really pulls forward to the next task or, or the next time that they're moving through that writing process. So, these kindergarten students here are lining up their pieces with the targets they have. They've, they've added clips as they've drafted along the way and made goals for themselves about what they've currently done and what they'd like to do better. And I couldn't resist the opportunity to tell you about this young man here, so.
Thanks that you were at this poster for writing.
Because, because I have upper letters and lower, and lowercase letters.
Okay, and what else?
Um, that's right. That's right. And, and I have upper letters and lower letters.
Okay, are you spelling out your words?
Mm-hmm.
What about your sight words? Can you show me where you're spelling them correctly? What sight words are spelled correctly?
What sight words are spelled correctly?
The N-A-B-Y.
Okay, so, did you spell two correctly?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Did you spell go correctly?
Yep. Goal.
Oh, that's gold.
Yep.
What's that?
You. Can. The. Ball. All.
And do you have spaces between your words? And do you have punctuation? Periods, question marks? Okay, so, what's something you need to work on?
Periods.
In adding punctuation?
Can I write now, do periods?
Sure, you can do that.
All right. Wonderful young kindergarten man. I would point out, that was probably about January, and you see the level of fluency that he's got going on those pages there as a kindergarten writer. So, this work has a great deal of power for our young boys and girls.
Mr. Politier was just commenting, he looks like a future banker.
Yeah. Yes, this is serious business. I'm very proud of my learning here. Can't you see that?
He knew it was gonna be taped that day.
So, I selected essential eight, because a lot of the practices have to do with the skills involved in literacy. But essential eight is about the passion of being literate individual and living a literate life. And how do we build that in our students? And, you know, I think about it as a principal, and I think about it as a parent, that, you know, one of my goals is absolutely to have kids just fall in love with reading by the time they leave our schools. And, because it's just such a rich aspect of my life, and it's something I value so highly, and it's something I want for all the kids in our building. And so, this essential is important to me, and I wanted to talk a little bit about how we help kids along that path at the elementary level. So, specifically, one of the descriptors is that the classroom includes a wide range of books. And we know from our own experience as parents and educators that children grow into the educational life around them, or the intellectual life around them. And being surrounded by books at home and at school is a big part of the first step. So, having a wealth of books and resources for them to choose from, including digital books, with our iPad technology that we have, kids have access in the classroom to a wide range of additional books that they don't have physically in the classroom. And most of those resources are available to them at home as well. So, this is kind of a little collage here, showing some of the examples of things that we also use to help generate interest in reading. So, having just displays in the classroom and in the media center, where kids can see books and get interested in books, and maybe they're gonna grab one off the shelf, because it's got a cover that looks intriguing to them, or it has the picture of a dog on it, and they really love dogs, so they wanna pull that book. You have books that are appropriate reading levels for the children in your classroom, so they don't get frustrated when they lay hands on a book, that they have success when they're reading it, and that leads them to wanna choose another one. Students have individual book bins in the classroom. You can see them on the right side, the blue bins, and they have a variety of different texts in there. So, when it's time to apply some of the skills that they've learned, they have books that are interesting to them to look at and refer to to practice some of those skills. And then, down on the bottom, you'll see our media center pages, where there are all of those apps available for kids to access, including resources that they can utilize over the summer, so they have continuing sources for literature in their lives. So, books and materials that are also connected to children's interests, and also their background knowledge and their cultural experiences. So, one of the things that we have worked toward over the years is building a library collection in other languages for our students. And so, this, this shelf is an example. It's, I mean, it's very tiny down there, but we have books in Japanese, we have books in Chinese, we have books in Arabic, we have books in every language that we can get our hands on. And that's been a very deliberate effort to acquire texts from our international families as they leave the district, or they're willing to donate books and materials to our library, so that when our kids come in, they feel at home, because they see that we have materials there that are, hey, I see myself in that book, or I see my language, or that's, you know, the language I see my parents reading at home. And that can be very powerful. We also, as part of our district and school improvement efforts, through our experiences with the global ed teams and their training through Global Champions and the Institute for Healing Racism, have made a concerted effort to really look at our existing classroom libraries and curate them, so that they more accurately represent our student populations. And we are discarding books that really are not appropriate any longer, or that aren't representative of the children that we see in our classrooms, or the experiences that we see in our classrooms. So, by way of example, if you have, you know, a book in your collection back from the seventies, that all the, you know, firefighters are men, you might wanna toss that one and replace it with one that's a little more gender-inclusive, by way of example. So, that's something that we have all been working on, and that's a continuing, ongoing effort. Allowing kids to take books home. You'll see on the left, the book in the bag. And those of you who have had children in elementary school in recent years, that should be a very familiar piece to you. So, it's sending home a book with the child with a very deliberate intention. A lot of our teachers will attach a Post-It, so the parent knows exactly what to work on with the child when that book comes home. We also have, obviously, the classroom lending libraries. The media center lends out books on a regular basis. And then, of course, amazing partnerships with the public libraries. The apps, again, I mentioned that earlier. We at Lompine are extremely grateful to the West Bloomfield Public Library, because they have an amazing program, where they partner with us every year and donate a ton of books to our school. And that's another way that we connect to get books in the lives of our children, and really build enthusiasm for reading. Of course, we had to get Cory in here, because, again, building that enthusiasm and that view of life is, you know, a rich experience of reading. So, we have Cory coming in to be a guest reader. Particularly this last month, we've had a ton of parents coming in to be mystery readers. So, there's a lot of excitement built up around, you know, who's gonna be the reader of the day, and the kids get clues, and they get all excited. And so, it becomes something that's very fun. That picture on the bottom right, that's, I write out the back door of my office. The kids line up out there in the morning. So, literally, I stepped out in the hall to kind of supervise the kids, and this is what I walk up on, is a group of third-grade boys, instead of socializing, instead of like, you know, wrestling, doing, you know, their boy thing in the morning, they're all parked on the floor, and they've all pulled out a book, and they're all reading. I mean, that's the kind of thing that makes your heart sing, as a building administrator. Like, these kids love to read, and that's what I love to see. Bullet five is about the opportunities for children to engage in independent reading materials of their choice every day, but it's deliberate. So, it's not just randomly picking things. It's actually very purposeful intent, with the teacher working with the student on a specific skill, but maybe with a book that's their choice. And then, finally, we get to questions. I couldn't resist these two little pieces of writing here. On the left, we have Trevor, who says, "If I was reading an informational book, then my brain will explode." And then Gloria on the right says, "Reading makes me feel happy, because I do it with my dad." And then, of course, I had to sneak my favorite child right there in the minute, who is a passionate lover of books and reading. And he's reading The Wild Robot Escapes. So, any questions?
I would just say invite school board members to come and be mystery guest readers too.
So, I saw one picture of like an easel, and there was a young, young man who was like pointing to the, to the easel and stuff like that. So, he was making a presentation, or he was pointing to things that were gonna be recited, or?
Was that in mine, or was that a previous one?
No, that was a previous one, I'm pretty sure.
Oh, that was in yours.
And so, what you might see early in the day is a morning message. Sometimes, students co-construct that. Sometimes, the teacher might put something there. You can see, today is Tuesday, it might be November, and we have Spanish, computer lab, and music today. Love Mrs. Colby. And so, what this young man is doing is leading the room, reading that statement. And a variety of things might happen there. It might be the way that we first explore how we respond to an exclamation point. So, we're not gonna just read a sentence or two, but we're probably gonna read it with a lot of, wow, kind of thing.
His first presentation?
Right, exactly. And it's, it's a really big deal in the classroom to have this pointer and have this roll. So, that sense of community that comes in times like these, as he leads and kind of commands his group, and they interact with him, has, has a lot of cachet to it as well.
And I also noticed, like, little breakout groups of like three kids in each group. Is, is that working? Basically, what you're trying to do, if I understand it correctly, is just set up a rudimentary understanding of teamwork, and, you know, group, group work, and all that other kind of stuff. Is that, how's that working out? How's that working out?
So, our students would come together for a variety of reasons across the day. And they, they would, just as you've said, share idea with one another, either in partnerships, or in triads, or, or in larger groups as well, usually with some kind of shared focus, something they've completed perhaps independently or collectively. And it really would be a part of the instructional design on the part of the teacher. But in terms of reading and writing instruction, they are kind of flexing from that whole group instruction point to, let me go try that on by myself, practice with independence, what I've just learned. And then, I'm usually gonna come up alongside someone. I'm either going to share my learning with them, or I might shift into a different kind of reading or writing practice exercise, like the group at the table who were collaborating over their conclusions. So, those four young men at the table, each had composed an individual conclusion. They were sharing it with one another, and their buddies were saying, hey, that, I like what you did there, or, ooh, I think you can do better. Go take a look at those four quadrants and assess yourself. So, it might be for a variety of reasons based on the lesson. I'm not sure if I'm really answering your question.
Well, no, I guess what I, what hit me is that, you know, these are things that, you know, we would expect the kids to do in, in middle school, or, or high school, or something like that. And now, we're, we're down at the elementary level, which is great, because, you know, you, there's, there's this belief in the, in the world of psychology that basically, you know, we are living out our lives as adults through the subconscious lens of our child, and reviewing the world based on experiences that we had when we were very young. And we're reacting to things based on things that we experienced when we were very young. So, the fact that, that we're setting up an environment for them, for them to have positive experiences doing these things, whether it's making a presentation, or being part of a group, or breakout group, or whatever, is really, in my mind, just really setting them up for success. I mean, because this is something that we'd definitely be able to carry all the way through school and out into whatever their profession might be. So, I'm so, I'm so glad that, you know, you're seeing positive outcomes by bringing it down to the elementary level. I mean, that's a dream, and it's, it's, it's a reality. I mean, I think it's just awesome. It's very exciting.
Anything else on the board? Thank you very much. It's, it's exciting.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Is there someone following us that I can queue up here?
So, next up is gonna be Tina and Brian, who are gonna be giving a sinking fund update for us, because we do have sinking fund millage election coming up next month.
Yes, we do. So, what we did is, we are, we actually lifted information directly from our website. So, the slides you'll see have a lot of words on them. We're not going to read to you, but these were the highlights that we wanted to present tonight, especially for anyone watching from home. And then, at the end, we will actually go to the website. The website is live, and we have been adding information, especially as questions arise, that perhaps we haven't thought of. So, to start, what are we asking our community for? First, our district has had a sinking fund millage since 2004, through the generosity of our community. We are asking for a replacement millage, which I'll explain in a later slide, for the same rate we levied last year, 7.7165, for six years. And that's going to generate, based on today's taxable values, about $2.5 million each year. What is a sinking fund? That's been a common question as well, especially that unique name. And by definition, and I always, you know, look at the finance guys on the board. So, when we think about a sinking fund, or actually look it up by definition, it is a method for us to actually set aside revenue, in this case, on an annual basis, to replace wasting assets, or for capital needs. And so, that's basically what we've been doing since 2004. Our goal is not to save it, it is to use it for needs that Brian will explain in a moment. So, what can sinking fund dollars be used for, Brian?
So, the three R's: repair, renovation, and remodeling, along with construction. It cannot be used for maintenance items. It cannot be used for salaries, wages, that type of thing.
That's Michigan law.
Correct. Examples of the past, you guys all know this so well, but a lot of what we do, you can't see, or you don't realize, like roofing and boilers and things like that. Some of the stuff you can see but may not recognize, like windows and doors, and energy-efficient upgrades. And then, there are some things that are much more visible. Mark, you'll remember the West Hills Drive, when there was only one way in and one way out. Ed Ford, you'll remember the, the leaking cloud canopy system over at East Hills Middle School, and the ADA elevator, where people used to have to go take their wheelchair down Kensington Road to get from one side of the building to the other. Now, they can stay indoors. So, that's kind of nice. And then, there's, you know, some of the things have some visual pop. This is an East Hills Middle School bathroom before and after pictures.
That's a lot better.
And that was actually just one of the pictures. So, when we go to the website, you'll see there are many more, and we won't have time to actually go through all of those tonight. But it's just, it was amazing to me, in pictures, how much was captured with before and after, or during the process of the, going through the project, and, and what it looks like over all of these years. So, why replace the current sinking fund? Essentially, Brian mentioned what we can use sinking fund dollars for now, which is law. And recently, legislation was passed to expand those uses to include security and technology, safety, security, and technology. So, even though our current millage doesn't expire till December, and we have one more year we could levy under the current law, we would like to take advantage of these expanded uses. But to do so, we need to ask our voters to approve a replacement. And that's why the word replacement is used in the ballot language. What are some examples of things that we may seek to do?
So, camera systems. We've realized the benefit of a high-quality camera system at the high school. It, it deters a lot of problems, and it solves problems very, very quickly. And the camera systems today are, we can have live feeds, go to the police station. We can monitor things from remote, you know, through, through web access now. So, it's something you might, you know, we would consider for the rest of our buildings. Camera systems for our buses, along with GPS tracking, and there's apps that parents could use to track their students, their child's bus, the location of it, when the bus is gonna get there in the morning, so they don't stand outside for so long.
Now, for more information, especially those watching from home, the website and the webpage related to the sinking fund is populated with so much more than we just covered. And the easiest way is to go to bloomfield.org, and in the search box in the upper right-hand corner, type in sinking fund. And when you do so, the screen usually does not go black. This is the part, I never really thought there would be an issue with this. Okay. No, well, I mean, okay.
I think you might have put sinking ton, but.
Well, yeah, it still shouldn't be a.
Sinking ton.
We believe it, though.
David, can you hear us over?
Coming back?
We have a problem.
Well, yeah. I don't give up that easily. Connection was interrupted. Okay. I am actually going to go to, and we should have us right here. And one more time. Yay. First option. Okay, persistence can be good. So, many of the things that we covered truly were lifted right from this page. And if I just scroll down, you can see how lengthy the page is with information, comparing us in the county to other districts. Our capital-related millage rate, just to note, is the lowest in the county, actually by quite a lot. And when we look at projects, past projects here, this is what we showed you, but there are many more examples. And then, the one thing I really wanted everyone to pay attention to is on the right side, future sinking fund work, which also includes things that are being done now or soon. And then, some of the later items listed by location, every single location within our district, things that we have derived from our meetings that we call just the facts, going building to building with a group of us, and listening to the needs that are there, along with the assessment that Brian does with his team. So- that are there, along with the assessment that Brian does with his team. So for instance, if I look at Way Elementary, project description, it's color-coded. So now and done would be anything in red. Soon, we project to be able to do that with our sinking fund monies. If the replacement passes, we have one more year under the current. And then the black items are actually later, but not within the budget of the proposed sinking fund. So the, the answer to sometimes the question we hear is, is that enough? Basically, the sinking fund is allowing us to keep our buildings up. It's allowing us to take care of things that are in emergency or not. But yet, it's not enough for everything that we may envision for our students and their, and their learning environments. But these, by building, should give everyone that's interested in these locations a picture of what that is. And then the last item I would leave you with, which is a question we will be adding to the website, is somebody asked, what about the sale of real estate and the proceeds, and what happened with those monies? So the two key would be the Wahbeek Land, which did close, and we received the proceeds. We placed them in the capital improvement fund. We do not use those for operations. We've discussed, and the, the board also directed those monies to go into the capital improvement fund to take care of needs like the sinking fund. Or the sinking fund does have parameters that we have to live within, and so maybe there are projects that are outside of that scope. But those monies, we know the land can only be sold once, and the monies may only be used once, so we have set those aside. Much of that money from Wahbeek has been used for the demolition, asbestos abatement work at Hickory Grove, the north side of Losser, as well as the old board office. And Pine Link, thank you. And then for the Hickory Grove property, while it seems like it's been a while, we have not yet finalized and closed on that property. When we do, about half of the monies will be coming in, and that is expected yet this spring. And then it'll be until the next phase of that development happens, when we receive the other half of the monies. So that hopefully answers some of the questions that I know have been coming in, and we will add that to the website shortly. Any questions that you've heard, that we might address? Comments?
Yeah, I got a couple. Go ahead, Brian.
As you can see from the description of items that Tina went through and Brian, you know, had put together, these are things that just have to be done on a regular basis. I mean, you know, we all have houses that, you know, the, the driveway starts deteriorating and getting little cracks and potholes, or the roof starts to leak, or our furnaces are old. So these are things that have to get done. Without sinking fund dollars, we have to use our general fund dollars. And general fund dollars, as we all know on the board, have been constrained and possibly even shrinking over the years. So without the sinking fund approved by the, the taxpayers, we would have to use our general fund dollars to pay for these things. These are not options. We will have to do this, which means it takes money away from the classroom. So this is really something that we really would greatly appreciate if the community could approve, because it really does help the, the education. Even though these are brick and mortar type of expenses, they really have a, a very definite indirect effect on the classroom.
Other comments? I just wanted to add a couple of things. Absentee ballots are available now. I do know people who have already voted. So please take advantage of the opportunity and get out and vote for, and, and just hope we will support our sinking fund renewal, our replacement. And I was going to say the same thing, one of the same things that Howard was just saying. And I also want to, again, thank Representative Recreedy, who really was instrumental in helping to get the expanded definition and uses for these dollars, which really will help us. And, because he really was a, a key force to really make that change become reality. And it was something that we had hoped for, for many years previously. And I just would say, in reinforcement of what Howard just mentioned, is that I've been on this board quite a long time, and it was, for many years. We always did need to use two and a half, three million dollars every year to, to absorb the cost from our general operating budget to do this kind of projects. And it really does make a difference on what we can provide to our students in order to, to be able to have these funds available to us. So it's really a vitally important part ongoing for the school district, to be able to have these dollars available to help offset the, these expenses, so we can keep them more focused on our kids.
I think that I would just like to have you mention again about that it's a replacement. Would you just reiterate what that means?
Yes. So basically, we have one more year under our current sinking fund millage that we can levy. And we levy twice a year, in the summer and winter, half and half. And so in lieu of that, one more year this year, we are asking for this replacement, so immediately what we levy in July and December falls under the new law, and it's the same rate as last year.
Same rate as last year?
It starts out that way. We're actually, we, our rate has been decreasing because of Headley rules, but I don't think, we tried to explain that on the website. But we did get a question, and this is probably worth noting. We have been fortunate to see property values start to rise. And with those rising property values, that in the form of SEV, or state equalized value, they certainly have been growing. But millage rates are actually multiplied by the taxable value, and taxable value growth is capped. So that therefore caps us. And to the extent our total property values in all of the district rise more than inflation over last year, the rate actually gets rolled back to prevent us from collecting more than an inflationary increase.
Let me just add also, what Representative Recreedy allowed us with the change in the law is obviously technology, which is always changing and always evolving, as society is. But it's security. And where we had Sandy Hook and things like that in the, you know, not so distant past, but obviously, over the last few months, we had Parkland, just in February. So the whole country is having discussions related to school security, you know, how appropriate that we at this time are able to renew, incorporate security into this, and give Brian the flexibility with Corey Donberger to really look at our security needs in our buildings and spend our dollars wisely to protect our children.
And with that, Brian actually brought up an excellent point. We talked about replacing this last year. The request also adds another five. So we are asking for six years, just to make that clear. Replacing this year's levy, and then adding another five, all under the new expanded legislation.
Very good. Any other remarks from the board?
So when is that election date?
That would be May 8.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. Next on our agenda is general discussion. And we have a, a meeting of the Finance Facilities and Legal Affairs Committee. Mr. Bank, do you, do you have some comments to make about that?
A few things to add. A lot of it's been covered in reports from Cabinet that were disseminated, and other comments are made tonight, so I'll do my best not to be redundant. We've covered six items. The first one we covered was childcare, before-school care, after-school care. And there hadn't been any change in the rates since 2008. We're the least expensive district in the county. And they presented to us the need to increase the rates very slightly. We're talking about a dollar a day increase. And we would still be a lower cost than all of our neighbors. But the increase is needed due to new regulations requiring onsite supervisors, higher costs with insurance, higher costs of supplies. And we received a very thorough presentation, and it looks like very sound reasoning, and wow, and needed at this time. The second thing that we covered was custodial services. Brian's working on addressing some issues relative to the contract, and he'll be bringing much more detail to the board in the coming weeks with that. This third and fourth items had to do with refuse collection, renewal, renewal of the GFL contract, and the purchase of two Ford Transit vans. And since we already voted on that in the consent agenda, I will not belabor the points any further. Fifth thing that we talked about was the master property plan update, and Rob included a lot of that in his update this week. The only thing that I would add, and Tina had mentioned it, that the Hickory Grove site's ready for the first closing, and half of the money is expected sometime this spring. And actually, I think Tina just said that, and I was redundant despite my intentions not to be. And last was added to the agenda, discussion regarding budget balancing actions for next year, and good news and bad news. Good news being that they've identified approximately a million dollars in savings for next year, and the bad news being, despite that, we're still projecting at a loss for next year. And that covers everything that we discussed.
Questions from anybody who was there? Thank you, Mr. Bank. Only other thing I have for general discussion is to say thank you to the Nature Center, because yes, with spring, one of the early gifts of spring is maple syrup. And I know they had their syrup collecting time at the Nature Center, and this is one of my favorite. One of the things I figure, this is how I get paid as a school board member. This is liquid gold. It's a wonderful thing, and I love having it. Thank you so much to all those who did the hard work, because it takes a lot of syrup to make a little, a lot of, of sap to make a very little bit of syrup.
Before we move on, I want to mention the meeting that we have next week, related to the School Finance Research Collabor...
I, I did announce that earlier.
Oh, I didn't hear it. I'm sorry.
So just to re, to reiterate that, Bob Moore
Yeah.
will be coming next Wednesday morning at 9:30 here in this room to, to discuss the School Finance Research Collaborative Report. And I would just want to mention that he has been celebrated this year as the Michigan School Business Official of the Year for the State of Michigan, and, which is extremely well-deserved. He's done a hero job in the work he has done to help to bring the, to light the information on school finance that the whole state will benefit from. So I encourage all of you to come. He is the guru. There is, he is the best. And I know that they, this has been announced that it is open also to Birmingham, as well as Bloomham, Bloomfield families to come and be part of this presentation next Wednesday morning, 9:30 here in this room.
And he's been traveling all over the state giving this presentation?
Right, right. All right. With that, we are into public comment time. At this point, I do not have any cards. All right. Well, hearing none. One, two, three, gone. Okay. Then we move on into board business. And we only have one item on our agenda this evening, which is the approval of policy number 5400, firearms and other weapons. And while Kelly is coming up, we have had a first reading of this policy at our last board meeting, and we had further discussion during our study session earlier this evening. And I guess first I'd like to have, get a motion on the table for a discussion. Are you going to do that?
I can, let me get the right page. I'm sorry. All right. Our request that we approve policy 5400, firearms and other weapons.
I have support. Discussion. Kelly, please, your comments.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to share, while this policy may not meet all of our needs at this time, I'm requesting its adoption tonight to set the expectation that as a district, we are a dangerous weapons-free zone.
Okay, thank you. I guess first I'd like to have somebody read the policy.
Policy 5400, firearms and other weapons. To the full extent permitted by law, the district prohibits firearms and other weapons on district premises and at district-related functions. District employees and students who violate this policy are subject to discipline, including permanent expulsion or discharge. Others who violate this policy are subject to being banned from district premises and district-related functions. This policy should not be interpreted to prohibit the possession of firearms and other weapons on district grounds by members of law enforcement or others authorized by the district to protect student and staff safety. The district reserves the right to report to police authorities any person who violates this policy.
So earlier this evening, Bob Lusk from Lusk Albertson did come and speak with us. And as we had discussion at our last board meeting, we wanted to, this is a fairly straightforward, simple policy, but there are a lot of other pieces that can be, we, we think can maybe make it, improve it. And so we had a very rich conversation earlier this evening with great input from the board. And so our intent is to try to, I hope, my colleagues will want, want to approve the policy that is before us this evening, with the intention that we would continue to improve it and bring it back for, for revision in the near future. Other comments? Mr. Bank?
I think as we discussed in the two-hour meeting earlier tonight, this is an excellent first step, and it sends a very strong message to the community as to what our expectations are for safety here in Bloomfield Hills. But it's a first step. And this, this language, we need to put something in place as soon as possible. But as we discussed earlier, it can definitely be improved upon, and we're going to continue to work on that and hone this policy and revise it in the weeks to come as needed to make it as strong as possible.
And I just want to mention that in our first reading, we had several members of the public at our public comment. And there was a lot of support for our strategy of implementing a policy as soon as possible, but also being able to really hone it in the future and come back and revise it, as Mark mentioned.
Any other comments from the board? Then I call for the question. All in favor of policy number 5400, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. I really feel it's important that we share with our staff, our students, and our community. This is an important statement that we need to be shared. All right. Well, then I believe that concludes all of our business before us this evening. Everybody, hopefully spring is here to stay, and a lot of exciting things on our schedule in the weeks ahead. Look forward to seeing you all soon. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Prouder? Thank you.